Good morning, everyone. I think it's 7:31. I see we've got a quorum present for the meeting, so we'll go ahead and begin. We'll begin with a roll call, and I see Vice Mayor Freeman. Not seen Mr. Whitaker yet. Mr. Haredia, Councilmember Duff, Councilmember Luna, Councilmember Thompson, all present.
Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker will not be joining us today.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you. Will need to excuse from this meeting. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review our agenda for our meeting on Monday. So, Council, please refer to that document. I'm switching over to that screen now. Mr. Brady, is there any anything on this agenda that you feel like we need to have presentations on? Anything on the consent agenda?
Nothing on the consent agenda. We are prepared to provide a presentation on the Item 8.
The zoning case, the Thomas and Recker. Okay. Council, before we get to that, is there anything on the consent agenda that you have any questions or concerns or comments on?
Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Vice Mayor Freeman.
Thank you. 5A, the Gilbert Road Bridge, I hear we're participating at $1 million. Chris, how is that funded? For the bridge construction?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, Vice Freeman, that'll come from our transportation fund.
Local street sales tax.
Yeah, the local street sales tax, sorry. Yeah. So, this is in, our million is, RJ is matched with, who the other?
Salt River Pima Indian community is also contributing $1 million towards the project. So, this has been in the works, as you know, Vice Mayor, for many years to try to deal with the challenges with the existing bridge structures.
Yes, correct. So, it's, just so everybody knows, it's a standalone bridge. It'll be separate from the ones to the, on the west half, but they're going to be parallel to each other.
There were two concepts that we're looking at, Vice Mayor. I'm going from memory on this, but I'll have to get back to you. I don't recall if you ended up with a single bridge structure or two. But the cost was an issue as the county started designing that, so I can confirm with you exactly what will be built.
Thank you. That's all.
I'm sorry, I had the same question Mr. Freeman did. I know that the city's contribution is $1 million, but this is actually a McDott project. If I'm, am I correct in that? And if so, I, what percentage is, if our contribution's $1 million, what percentage is McDott paying?
Mayor, the project is many millions. I'll have to get the exact number, but it's a very expensive project.
The million, our million and the million from the Salt River Pimas is just a fraction of the total overall. You can imagine this is a bridge that's being built.
It's, it's, it's two digits in the millions. I'd have to, I'll get you the exact number, but it's, it's a fairly expensive project.
Yeah, I know Mr. Freeman and I had a meeting with Supervisor Chukri a while back, and he was anxious to talk to us about this, very proud of the fact that the county was stepping up in a big way to do this. So, I, I knew that we had some skin in the game. I'm pleased to hear that the, that the Indian community does as well, but glad we're getting some Maricopa County money being spent in our, you know, on the border of our community as well.
Mayor, I will note that the city received $400,000 from Maricopa County. They moved over some SRP aesthetics funds that they would not, could not use, so we're actually using $400,000 of that money on one of our PATH projects. So, if you want to look at it as a net contribution to the bridge, it's actually about $600,000.
Okay. Thank you. Good to know. Council, other, other questions on any items on the consent agenda? Okay, if, if hearing, Mr. Brady, I know we've, the Thomas and Recker project is one you've been working, city staff has been working on diligently. Looking forward to hearing your report on that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. So, yes, as you know, this is a property that is owned by the city. We had an auction on this property. We have a successful bidder, and since that time, we've been working with Blandford Homes on negotiating the zoning as well as a development agreement. So, those are all in place now. We had a unanimous vote from the Planning and Zoning Committee Commission, and but, and as most recently, many of you may know this, we've also reached an agreement on the development agreement with all the parties involved, including Boeing. And so, we're happy to bring this forward to you. I'm going to have Veronica just kind of go over the highlights of what is being proposed for Council consideration on Monday. So, go ahead.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers. Veronica Gonzalez, Development Services Project Manager. This, this presentation is for the Reserve at Red Rock by Blandford Homes located at the northwest corner of Thomas and Recker Roads. So, on March 21st of 2019, we know we held a lot, a land auction where Blandford Homes was the successful bidder. Following the auction and opening of ESCRO, Blandford Homes submitted a formal request for a minor general plan amendment to change the character designation from Parks to Neighborhood, and also to rezone the property from a public semi-public zoning designation to a density similar to that of Red Mountain Ranch, which is in the area. The proposed development included private streets, which also has private amenities. There will be approximately 296 detached single residence homes, and as Mr. Brady noted, the Planning and Zoning Board provided a unanimous recommendation of approval on January 8th, 2020. We have been working with the developer on a development agreement pretty much since the auction award. To accompany the general plan amendment and the rezoning, we've proposed a development agreement. The major points being that the city will be retaining approximately 17 acres of the property along the north, actually just south of the NAMO property, where we will be installing a public access nature trail. However, the contract price for the land sale did not change as a result of retaining this area. There's also an existing lift station on the property, and to make it more aesthetically pleasing, the city will be painting the screen wall and installing some new gates, and then the developer has the option to install some landscaping around the lift station area. The city is setting aside about $5 million of the $21.1 million sale for park amenities that will be distributed around the northeast Mesa area. The funds will provide for that public nature trail along the north side of the development, and also pickleball courts at Geanautry Park, and the remaining dollars will go towards future athletic fields to be constructed at Red Mountain Park. I'd like to point out here, there's a little notch you may have noticed. This is a private park that is owned by the Red Mountain Ranch Homeowners Association. Mr. Blandford is currently in discussions with the HOA there to install some private amenities. That would be a private agreement between the two parties, and as I understand it, those discussions are ongoing. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Veronica, for that clarity in that presentation. I do want to mention that the, one of the sticking points is working with Boeing because they had requested allocation needs met. I will say that I spoke with Boeing on Monday, and that has been satisfying. So, that's a good thing. So, we were, of course, concerned with Boeing. They're a great company here in the city of Mesa. We wanted to make sure that they were satisfied with the project, but they had some issues when they wanted to work with the developer, and they have, and since they've been satisfied, I spoke to them on Monday. The other thing is, I spoke with some individuals from the HOA, from Red Mountain Ranch. They are working in collaboration with the Blandford Development at Reserve at Red Rock, and things, as far as I understand, are going well. So, so Blandford is working with the HOA to, working on these amenities as this project moves forward, and so I'm going to be in support of this project. There was some concerns around, around Boeing as well as the Red Mountain Ranch community, but at this point, I'm hearing that all of those concerns have been satisfied.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. I know you've spent a lot of time working with the HOA and Mr. Blandford and been very involved in, in this process from the very beginning, so thank you for all the efforts along with city staff working on this. Mr. Freeman, did, is that your hand? I think you're, you're still muted, Mark.
About now.
Yes, that's good.
Hey, I did receive a call from Boeing, and I'm glad that that allocation agreement was worked out, and I'm glad to see this property being developed and working with the HOAs and others. But I have a question for Mr. Luna, Councilmember Luna, if why he couldn't share some of his funding with the other districts if he can't fund everything in this district.
Well, my residents have been pleading for pickleballs, pickleball courts throughout the city of Mesa, so I'm glad that the city, as well as Parks and Rec, have come up with a plan to satisfy my residents and providing them the amenities that they're looking for. So, thank you, Mr. Hirschberg and Mr. Brady for satisfying that need for pickleball courts in, at the city of Mesa. Thank you.
So, Mayor and Council, let me give Councilmember Luna a little coverage on this. So, the, what the theory was behind the allocation was because originally when this land was purchased, it was purchased for a regional park. If we remember, the history is after the city purchased this property as a regional park, just as it was being literally prepared to be developed for single-family homes, the city was not able to get voter approval to actually build out this park. It was defeated at least once, maybe twice. And so, what we, what we've done in recognition of the fact that the land was originally purchased with park bonds, I think for an amount somewhere over $4 million, that's why, that's how we came up with the $5 million and as of today's dollars, to, if you would, keep the proceeds from the sale of the land into the parks' benefit. And so, we were able to, in order of priority, designate dollars for the nature trail that's on the north end of this property that Veronica mentioned, and then, as Councilmember Luna indicated, the next priority was the pickleball courts, and then whatever remains after those two, as far from the $5 million, will then go be contributed to the Red Mountain Park complex with the soccer fields that are being built out there.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. The irony in all of this is that the headline, I think for most of the community, will, will read "New Pickleball Courts at Geanautry Park," you know, after all the, the work that's gone into all the details of this project. I'm excited to see this go forward. I think we know this has been a problematic piece of property for decades in the city of Mesa, and I was on a council literally 25 years ago that really struggled with what to do with this piece of property. So, it's, it's, it's really great to see a, a good resolution here. My, my hope at the beginning of this process is that we would have a win-win-win situation, and that we could talk to all the stakeholders who had competing interests in this and find out what their priorities were, and try to find a way to deliver and address those, those concerns, and I think this, this plan does that. I watched the planning and zoning hearing, and there was a real great vetting, you know, with all, all parties there, wrestling and talking about what their priorities were, and I think that we came up with something that satisfies that. But, but I'm interested in knowing more about the 17-acre nature trail on the northern border, because during planning and zoning, that part of this project was really not being planned by the Blandford Company. It was just being deferred to, you know, the, the city will figure that out, and the city will come up with a, a park of some sort, a linear park that allows, you know, for the neighborhood to continue to have a place to go walk in the desert, and, you know, to take their dogs out and to go stretch their legs and to experience the beautiful desert flora and fauna, you know, that, that is native to that area. So, Mr. Brady, I wonder can, what, what can you tell us about the 17-acre nature trail that really hasn't, that didn't get a, much of an explanation during the planning and zoning process?
Yeah, it may, it may not have had a discussion then, but we've certainly been in a lot of discussions with the HOA and the developer, but all, Mr. Hirschberg is here. He can explain the, what the trail is, and just a reminder, the 17 acres is that all the property between north of the Blandford Development and just immediately south of NAMO Tally. So, it serves multiple purposes. It provides a buffer from the operations at NAMO Tally on the north, and it provides, again, being consistent with trying to provide some kind of recreational amenity on this site, but also in a very passive use, which is what the preference was of the neighborhood. So, maybe, Mark, you can get in some more details for us.
Yes, Mayor, Council, good morning. As part of that, there's also in that, in that 17 acres, there's a significant wash that goes through there, so the entire site is not going to be developed. So, just keep that in mind, because that's one of the things that was important to the community that they enjoy now, is that open space and the, the natural desert that's out there. But to make some improvements to that site, we are looking at a small parking lot with approximately five traditional parking spots, and then one to two accessible parking spaces. A 1/8 mile paved ADA loop, which will be an enhanced botanical garden walk, and then a half-mile natural surface trail will be an out and, and back loop, so a full-mile loop back, back and, as you go out a half-mile and then return an additional half-mile with two overlook notes to give you those views of Red Mountain.
Thank you very much, and, and that has been vetted with the, the neighborhood and with the HOA, and we've gotten positive feedback on that? That was a question.
Well, we, we've, we've presented it to them. I think there was some concern expressed to them about having a parking lot and, and having people from outside the neighborhood come into the area, but we have to remind everyone that when we build parks, it's not just for the adjacent neighborhoods, it's intended for the entire city. So, we've kept the parking to a minimum of five? Were we at five?
Total seven at maximum, including two accessible.
Yeah, so five plus two accessible parking. So, we've kept that pretty minimal. It is not probably more typical, that's a compromise in the cities to keep that numbered low, but this was a commitment we did make to, some of the areas wanted to, the, the argument was you're taking away a park from us, and so this was kind of a balance between providing, but keeping a park amenity at this site so that where the residents could still have access in and out of this property, which they're used to today, even though it is actually closed off for public access. But this way, it becomes a formal opportunity for, into people from that neighborhood to, and others, to be able to come and access this very passive nature trail, and, and we did that, obviously, in lieu of building a more active playground equipment or something else. And then it, it also fits as well, as Mark was saying, it kind of respects the natural topography of this area by having this trail where it is, but also for the developer and for the city, it's important to note this provides a significant 17-acre buffer from NAMO Tally. And every so often, NAMO will create some noise, and, and so creating that buffer was also important strategically about where this nature trail was located.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a lot of different opinions on what the right number of parking places is there. I, to me, it seems like five to seven is appropriate every time. I frequently ride my bike or, or in that area, and it seems like there's perpetually five or seven cars parked along the street there, so I think this might be about right, personally. I'm, I'm sure there's people that will agree or disagree with that. Mr. Luna.
Yes, Mayor, I also heard about the, the parking there, was concerned about the amount of traffic, but I think keeping the traffic to a minimum, I mean parking spaces to, to mitigate the traffic issue that they, they, they think they may experience. So, I'm hoping that keeping the parking to a minimum, but yet allowing our entire community to access the park is, is going to be a good thing.
Right, yes, I, I agree, and, and I endorse the, the regional, the dispersed regional park concept that we've got here, where we're, we're bringing these park amenities, but we're, we're spreading them, you know, throughout the, the neighborhood in that region, the Red Mountain Park, athletic fields, and the pickleball courts at Geanautry, and, and the other amenities that we've talked about, I think is a, is a good and, and fair way to distribute the proceeds. So, yeah, I also am very much in support of, of what's gone on here, and I know that was challenging, that it involved a lot of parties, and so my compliments to Mr. Brady and the staff for what, at times, I had doubts that this project was going to happen, and so I, I'm, I'm pleased that everyone has come together to agree on this. Although I'm, I'm sure there'll, there'll be folks probably on, on Monday that want to express their lack of support, but, but I, I think this is a good compromise all around. Council, other, other questions or comments on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go back to our agenda for this study session. Item number two is to acknowledge receipt of minutes of various boards and committees. Is there a motion of that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Thompson. We'll do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker is excused. Councilmember Haredia, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. We have a rather short agenda today, so we're now at the point on our agenda where we discuss current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended.
Mayor, Mayor, quick, I, I apologize. There was one item that is not on your agenda, Councilmember Thompson, that we probably need to talk about. So, we have an item that will be placed on your agenda that you don't see today for Monday. We'd like to do that. I'm going to have, Nada, do you want to talk a little bit about this zoning case? This is an important case in Mesa that has some urgency as far as timing, so, Nada, maybe do you want to give a heads up? It's an important zoning case for an important development, so go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brady, just so I'm clear, this is a, a zoning case that's on our Monday agenda?
Yeah, I just, we, we didn't get it on the agenda on time for you to see, but we want to at least share with you what we'd like to do is, is add this to the agenda for Monday. There's, we're kind of running out of time with our summer break, and this is a project that has some sensitivity to timing. It's already gone through planning and zoning and is ready for bringing to council. We'd like to try to bring it on the 15th, because we need to take action on the 15th so that we can take the final action on, or the introduction on 15th, so we can do the introduction on the July 8th meeting, because after that, we are concerned that it may, there's some other factors that may make it difficult to do later than that. I don't know, Councilmember Thompson, do you want to help me with this one?
Sure, yeah, so it's a project that is down off the proposed SR24, and, and as Chris stated, it does have sensitivities to the timing of it, and so we just need to make sure that we get it on intro. They're looking to close on the land in August, early August, so we need to get it on the intro for the agenda on Monday, for intro, so that we have the, the allotted amount of time to approve it on the 8th, on July 8th, and then that way, the developer can, can go through ESCRO, get the land and get everything that they need in, in the order that they need to get it in to meet the timeframes.
Mayor, Council. Before we begin, Mr. Brady and Mr., I guess, Mr. Smith, I'm, I'm in no way opposed to this item being on the agenda on Monday and moving it forward, but I just wonder, can we legally discuss it in this meeting if it's not on the agenda for this meeting and it's not on the agenda for Monday's meeting at this point?
Fair enough.
So, Mayor and Council, I think the intent is not to discuss it right now whatsoever. It's just to simply give the, give the council and the public notice so that you, you know to check the agenda that's going to be updated here and legisstar in a few hours, so that the, the public doesn't feel like they're being surprised Monday with another item. And so, I think Nada's just going to just, literally just going to tell you what, what it is, and then no discussion, and we'll discuss it Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Council, the request specifically, there are, there are two main requests. One is the general plan character designation amendment from neighborhood to community activity center to basically allow the rezoning, and the rezoning is being requested to rezone the property from residential. Most of the zoning designations within the development are, is residential, so they are requesting it to be rezone from those residential zoning designations to general commercial with a plan area development overlay to allow the proposed uses. So, the Plan and Zoning Commission voted, I think it was 7-0 to approve it. They were really excited with the project and what it's going to bring to the city, so we'll be putting that on the agenda for your introduction on Monday.
So, Mayor, again, it's just, it's a zoning case that we're excited about because it is going from residential to commercial, taking advantage of the future access to the freeway. So, and then there'll be a future development agreement that'll be coming along with that sometime in, in July 8th, but we just, we need to get the, the items on the 15th for introduction, so we can meet the timelines for approval on July 8th.
Great, well, we'll look forward to learning more about it on Monday. Will this be on the consent agenda then, or the non-consent agenda?
We, we can have it on the consent agenda, Mayor, but then, if you would like, we would be glad to give a presentation, because there will be a development agreement that will come to council on July 8th. I think it's important to council understand why this was projected as significant as far as a commercial development along this, the new freeway that's being built out there.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we're going to need a drum roll, and it ought to be off the consent agenda, because you've got so much curiosity and positive publicity about this case, this mystery case, so we'll look forward to hearing about it Monday. I'm sure it's exciting. All right, so that takes us to agenda item number three for this minute, for this meeting, rather, which is current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. I know each of you has been very busy this past week, and you have a lot on your plate, so I'm anxious to hear more about what you would like to share about your past week's activities. Who would like to start? Mr. Luna, you're smiling, so let's go with you.
All righty, Mayor, thank you. I had a busy couple of weeks. Last week, we held our second Falcon Business Alliance webinar, so I want to thank our economic development staff, Bill and Jay, for participating, along with the Chamber of Commerce, and Natasha Karachi, who, who is co-leading that organization with me. It's posted on my Facebook page, if you want to see what that was all about. This past Tuesday, we honored George Floyd with an eight-minute, 46-second moment of silence, so that was this Tuesday. I had three interviews on the new vaping ordinance that went into effect on Tuesday, June 9th, with Ktar, KFYI, and KJZZ. I met with MAC, the Economic Development Committee individuals, and talked about our future goals. I'm, hopefully, I'll be chair of that committee beginning in July of this year. And yesterday, I attended the eating Mesa canned food drive over at Red Mountain Center, and we had some, like, good, good activity there as well, followed by a visit to the American Red Cross and Civil Air Patrol Emergency Blood Drive at Falcon Field Airport. And then this afternoon, I'll be hosting the second installment of, of your program, Mayor, Community of Color Forum, with representatives from the Asian, the African-American, Native American, Hispanic, and Muslim communities, along, along with Chief Cos and Andrea Alacot, so I'm looking forward to that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for doing that, Mr. Luna. I think it's important that we all make sure that we watch that Communities of Color Forum that you're doing today, and thank you for doing it. I also would recommend that the folks, if they haven't had a chance yet, watch the one that was filmed last Thursday with the African-American community and our police chief Ken Cos. I thought everyone did a great job. It was a, a difficult conversation at times, because we were talking about really things that are on the front pages of our newspapers right now and are very, very fraught with emotion, and given the context of the George Floyd death, but I thought it was an important discussion, as yours will be later today, so thank you for doing that. Council, other comments? Yes, Councilmember Duff?
Yes, this week, I've been fitting in between meetings and other things going on, is I'm attending the CNU, the Congress for New Urbanism Conference, that normally I would be in Minneapolis of all places to attend, but it is virtual, and so I've been attending a lot of the workshops, and the Congress for New Urbanism is, provides education resources to create socially just, economically robust, and environmentally resilient people-centered places and urban walkable. walkable communities. And so that's been a wealth of information. It's a gathering of architects, engineers, planners, city officials, and staff, and developments, and looking at how our cities are built. Also, the mayor and I, last night, attended a prayer and praise justice rally at New Beginnings Church with Pastor Andre Miller and Pastor Palmer of the Grove Church. Also in attendance was the upcoming mayor, Corey Woods of Tempe, Mesa PD, Scottsdale PD, Tempe PD were also there, and hundreds of people came out to pray and worship to find a better way to create a just world, a just system, and to rid our communities of the systematic racism for so long. It was a positive event of coming together to create change, and I appreciate the opportunity to be there and join with the community in that praise.
Thank you very much for being there, Councilmember Duff. I thought, I agree with you. I was, I really appreciated the opportunity to be there with you and to share some thoughts with the crowd. And it was a very positive event. Appreciate Pastor Miller's efforts to put it together. And I was at a similar event a few days earlier at the Humanist Foundation, where, again, very, it was just a very inspiring event. People shared positive messages about the urgency of the work that needs to be done to address the issues raised by the George Floyd death. But all in all, the attitude was very positive, and I was pleased and honored to participate in it. As long as I'm talking, I'll say I also was pleased to participate yesterday in one of our food distribution events. As I think we all know by now, on Wednesdays and Fridays, we have very large, very successful food distribution events at the Mesa Convention Center with the United Food Bank. Yesterday was certainly another example of that, steady line of cars, a lot of volunteers. We've gotten really good at passing out a lot of food. I was, again, just very impressed with the volume of food that the city and the food bank coming together can disperse, and how effectively and efficiently we're doing that. So for those in our community that are struggling with any food insecurity, I hope that they are taking advantage of this program. My understanding is we'll continue to do twice a week, maybe through the month of June, and then into July, focus on one time a week. But for the foreseeable future, this is still a great way for anyone who's experiencing some economic hardships as a result of the pandemic or for other reasons, can come by and pick up some food. Also pleased that we're continuing to do the food collection events scattered throughout all of our districts each week, and look forward to, I just appreciate the generosity of the community in coming in with the non-perishable food items that have been difficult for the food banks to acquire right now. That's going well. And again, appreciate the great partnership between the food bank and the city on those issues as well. Council, other, anything else you'd like to share with us? Mr. Freeman?
Yes, Mayor, to tag along with that, District One over at Sloan Park will be having our food drive next Wednesday, June 17th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon there at the Cub Stadium. So we invite people to come over and help donate canned goods and other non-perishable items to our food banks and also our other local nonprofits. So hope to see you there. Come on out and support us. Thank you.
Will do. Council, anything else you'd like to share with us under this agenda item? All right, Mr. Brady, tell us what our schedule of future meetings looks like.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, so we'll see you on Monday with the study session before the council meeting. And then at this time, we don't plan on having a study session on the 18th? Is that right? Is it what's today? Today's the 11th. Yes, the 18th, sorry. I'm losing track of days now. We won't be having a study session. I know there's a conflict for a few of the council members that need to be online for some conferences. And so we will, don't need that probably. We can go without that study session on June 18th. So then, after this coming Monday, we'll have a council meeting. And then the next time council will come together will be for the study session on June 25th. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. If there's nothing else, Council, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Please unmute your microphones, and we'll do a voice vote. On favor of adjourning this meeting, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.